All right, good evening everyone, we're going to get started for further business is the President of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, one God, and he is well, for liberty and justice for all. Parma, just please stop and make standing for a moment.
Okay, we'd like to have a moment of silence for Joseph Mazanti, that Mr. Mazanti was a softball coach, assistant softball coach for at least ten years, and a wonderful gentleman who just passed away a month or so ago, so I would like us to have a moment of silence in thanking Mr. Mazanti.
Thank you. All right, I have to see some introductions, I'm Chris Yanke, the board chair.
Kristin Frumel, Board President.
Ehmo Board Member.
Caitlin Hamilton, Senior Assistant Assistant.
Selahunia, Board Secretary.
Jaysharol, Board Member.
Kristen Harman, Board Member.
Pete Cubic, Board Member.
Dr. Cesar Contons, School Superintendent.
Shannon Maye, Board Clerk.
All right, item two is the Board and the Ministry of Unification, so like every month we're doing the first round of the championship recognitions, and the first school we have up is Bunge School.
And I'm going to present the schools this evening. Good evening everyone, Mary Soufakim, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and it is a great pleasure to announce Bunge's Seymour Champions. Fabian Buteras, please come on up. Speaking here, no? Fabian has shown creativity by being uniquely himself in all aspects. Not only is he talented in art, in drawing, but he shows creativity with completing his work in world within his classroom. Fabian comes up with creative and interesting ways to be successful, and we all enjoy seeing his creative success, and he was nominated by Mrs. Giannelli. So congratulations Fabian. The next Seymour Champion for September is Dustin Lee, uh, please come on up Dustin. Do you want to just turn it this way, and I'm going to read a little bit of information from Mrs. Mucci, okay? So Dustin has been nominated because he has a creative spirit. He uses his imagination when solving problems, and often demonstrates how he's thinking outside of the box with his insightful responses. Dustin is a wonderful artist and writer, he always chooses to spend his free choice time creatively, either drawing or writing. Dustin impresses his teacher, Mrs. Mucci, by using his imagination and creativity in different ways daily. Congratulations. We'd like for Dustin's family and Dr. Contons to put this one up. Thank you.
All right, on that, we'll have the president of the school.
Okay, Amare Abaj, in grade one, please come up. We have a chat, Ms. Harmerling's going to say congratulations.
Congratulations to you, there's your certificate, and I can't hear you.
So I'm going to turn it this way, so everyone can see, and I'm going to read a few words, okay? All right. Amari was nominated by his first grade teacher, Mrs. Imperio. Amari demonstrates creativity in the classroom, his writing and illustrations are elaborate. Every time Amari draws, he tells a story with it. Amari is full of great ideas and can problem solve in creative ways. He's a leader in math, especially during math stations, uh, because of his creativity. Congratulations. All right, parents come on up. Family?
It's Roy, just taking pictures. Come over here. Right beside him.
Congratulations, what a writer.
All right, say cheese Amari.
Cheese.
Very good. Every, all of you say cheese.
Okay, next is Penelope Pisiakta, please come on up, and she's in grade five. So Penelope was nominated by her fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Kimble, and Penelope is our most creative student. Penelope brings fresh perspectives and a natural curiosity to the classroom. She has a way of thinking outside the box and uses clever approaches when problem solving. Her creative enthusiasm is apparent whether it's related to mythology, coding, games, or academics. Mrs. Kimble enjoys listening to Penelope's, um, Penelope when sharing her thoughts and playing with her friends. She appreciates the risks Penelope takes in offering unconventional ideas and how she stays true to her ideas with confidence. Penelope has a vivid imagination which shines through in so many areas. I'm going to stop by your classroom and see what a great job. Congratulations, parents come on up. This is quite impressive.
Nice big smiles.
Of course I do. Mr. O'Rourke is here tonight, so he's going to talk about this.
Do you want me to do it?
Of course I do. Mr. O'Rourke is here tonight, so he's going to talk about this. I do have your notes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagin. All right, at this time, it's my pleasure to call up sixth grader from our green team at Seymour Middle School, Ellie Gerstenhauer. Ellie is a sixth grade student and a member of the green team. She is very creative and always loves to show her creativity in class. She loves to express herself through art and other hands-on projects. Ellie is always coming up with new imaginative ideas that impress her teachers and classmates. Now for those of you, this is something extra. We have 500 students at Seymour Middle School, and every team is able to nominate two students to be considered for this recognition. So for Ellie to have earned this recognition as a sixth grader during her first month of middle school is very, very impressive. So for that.
I'm just trying to get the family. Mrs. Foley, okay, great. I have a little battery. I think it took a minute.
Here, I could use mine.
Okay, thank you. Plan B. There you go. Okay. I'm going to have to use Mr. Floyd's phone.
At this time, it is my honor to call up Addie Dillon, eighth grader from the white team at Seymour Middle School. Addie is an eighth grade student at Seymour Middle School on the white team. Addie has also been selected as this month's Seymour Champion for her creativity. Her dedication and craftsmanship in creating a visually stunning and engaging class project demonstrate her imaginative and inventive mindset, always going above and beyond expectations. Now just an extra piece of information about Addie. Again, in the building with 500 students, every team is able to nominate a handful of students, and in addition to that, we have a unified arts department, and we also have a counseling department. Addie is the first and the only student since I've been the principal here to be nominated twice in one cycle of nominating students, so that's, that's a pretty big deal, that two different parts of the building felt that Addie was the person for this. So big round of applause and congratulations. Could the family come up, and can Mrs. Studley come up too? Come on up, Mrs. Studley. Mrs. Studley, you can stand right here next to Addie.
O'Rourke, is that Mr. Floyd's phone?
Rapture Leighton, come on down, to Seymour High School. Rapture here as a senior, she's getting ready to leave Seymour High School, what do you plan on doing when you get out of here?
Uh, teaching art.
Teaching art, she wants to be an art teacher, so that's great. She was nominated by Mrs. Darlene Soden, uh, who says that she has had the pleasure of having Rapture in several of her art classes. She's very talented, but more than anything, she is extremely creative. Uh, Mrs. Soden is always excited to see how she will interpret an assignment, and how she will experiment, explore, and execute it. Uh, Mrs. Soden says she loves to see light bulbs going off, uh, when I present a topic or task, uh, so she immediately starts brainstorming and always ends up planning something clever. An example of this, uh, she was planning to take to make a coral-like sculpture out of clay, she used a kitchen strainer to create strands of clay similar to tentacles. Uh, her use of unconventional tools in the art room was impressive, and furthermore, many times she will also create, uh, she will also add creative input in critiquing or assisting other students that are trying to problem solve. It's clear that you want to be an art teacher someday. And again, example of this, uh, was in a recent art endeavor where one student was, had, had been trying to work out how to sculpt a willow tree fountain from clay, and the student was struggling with not only, only the aesthetics, but also the engineering and the function of the sculpture, and Rapture had taken time to give the student valuable feedback. Uh, so again, Rapture, congratulations. Family, do you have any family? Come on, Mom. You're the one who put in all the work anyway, right?
I'm proud.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a couple, uh, different recognitions. First up, one that's sort of blown over, doing another victim of COVID, um, this is a distinguished alumnus from 2021, Michael.
Now, Michael was both years, the year of COVID-2000 and the year of 2021, and we thought that it would be a nice way to really show our appreciation. His name isn't listed among the distinguished alumnus, but he didn't get a plaque during this time, and I'm so sorry that he didn't, but I just wanted to bring this recognition forward. forward and thank you for all that you do for the town of Seymour, the community, for the veterans, and all that you do for us with the schools and the programs. Big thank you.
Dr. Compton, can I say a few words?
Yes, absolutely.
So, so Michael was recognized as the distinguished alumnus in 2020 COVID year, and it was terrible because he couldn't, never had the opportunity to address, um, the student body. So we brought him back again, and he was selected in 2021 where he had the opportunity to select it, and he's a member of DFW Post, American Legion, American Legion Post, what's the number, 10. And he and his crew of gentlemen, veterans, did a, for that graduation in 2021, a wonderful uh, flag ceremony and presentation of colors. So again, it was probably the most memorable, memorable graduation relevant to, uh, that aspect of it. So Michael Kearney, congratulations.
Okay, good thing.
Okay, up next, Mr. Shane Cather.
Mr. Floyd would like to say a few remarks about Shane. He just retired basically about a month and a half ago. He devoted 28 years of outstanding years of service to Seymour High School as a Spanish teacher. Was always very impressed with him. This man did not miss a day of school. Talk about dedication. He was, he definitely was a great teacher, and what a difference he made in children's lives. He's unable to be here tonight, but we just wanted to really give him the recognition that he deserves.
So Mr. Cather is actually, I used to refer to him as the heart and soul of our world language department. He, um, he, he, he loved working with the students, he taught the higher classes. He actually had the ugliest desk I'd ever seen in his classroom, uh, because on his desk is his students, he allowed them to sign his desk. So when you'd come in, you'd see a desk covered with signatures, and to be honest with you, it was pretty ugly, but he had some significant names on there, and he cherished that and all the kids that he worked with, and he'll be dearly missed and is retiring.
Uh, next on the agenda, the resolution will be presented under discussion and possible action, and we're, the Seymour Board of Education will be adopting this resolution. I'd like now for Mr. Floyd to come back up. We want to talk about Coach Kathy Fadden and the 500th win. I happened to be there at the game, and there was a lot of recognition. Channel A was there, a lot of the former players, state championships. As you know, she's been, she was adopted into the Connecticut Sports Hall of Fame, also was a volleyball coach of the year as well, and several different state recognitions. This woman has been phenomenal, and what a legacy.
Yeah, if you were to talk to Kathy Federowitz about it, she would, she would say that the, you know, over 20 years ago, the volleyball program was, was going to fold, and, uh, they actually referred to the volleyball players as cupcakes. And if you know anything about Kathy Fadden, she's one tough one. And, uh, she was convinced to take on the responsibility, I wanna say it was 22 years ago, which actually, 23 years ago, to coach Seymour volleyball. Prior to her coaching, they had losing seasons consecutively, year after year after year. Since she started coaching, they've had winning seasons. Um, within the course of 23 years, she accumulated over 500 victories, which is truly an amazing accomplishment. And one of the things, because I've heard her speak about it several times, that she always says is when she agreed to take the responsibility to coach volleyball, she really didn't know much about it, but she spent her entire summer coming into that season studying. And she said, uh, one of the things that she says about her accomplishments is that anything can be accomplished if you study enough. And through her studying throughout the summer on the beach at Cape Cod, she came back, and the first season she coached had 17 wins. Um, what's interesting about Kathy, I tried to get a picture of her from the yearbook, her first year coaching, she looks exactly the same. The woman's timeless, but anyway, she's a phenomenal volleyball coach, so.
College Board National Recognition. I want Mr. Floyd to send up. What a legacy. Uh, this is something I tried to charge him with a goal two years ago. I was studying AP scores, and I didn't let up, and the faculty didn't let up. They went last year, they were awarded the Bronze Award, and now this year, they have been awarded the AP College Board, AP Honor of Silver Award, which is outstanding. And you might just give a summation, we've had more AP scholars this year.
So for the silver award that we're talking about, um, Oklahoma, it's not that cheap as they refer to it, another one. There's three categories that they determine, you know, whether a school should receive AP recognition. One is under the cul, uh, college culture that exists within the school. And what that means is they wanna know what percentage of a graduating class actually challenged themselves by taking a college-level course, an AP class. Seymour High School, we had 52% of graduating seniors last year take one or more AP classes. That's one of the categories that we had to. In order to be recognized by this recognition, you need to have at least, uh, 40% of your students taking it. So we have 52, which put us in the silver range. Then we need college credit, and this is a percentage of students in the graduating class who scored three or higher on AP exams in the high school. And the Seymour High School, so for the graduating class, we had 39% of our kids who graduated last year at least scored three or higher on one of the AP exams. And the last, last metric is, is pretty interesting, it's college optimization. And this is the percentage of students in the graduating class who took five or more AP exams in high school, uh, where at least one exam was taken in ninth or 10th grade, okay? Um, and, and they find that six or more of the APs, hold on. So they had to take five or more AP exams, one of which in ninth or 10th grade. And Seymour High School, 12% of our graduating class had that last year. It's the highest percentage that we've had in that, that earned us the silver award, but we still have gold and bronze to work on. So that's coming up in the future, hopefully. But that's, wait, there's more. With that, we also, our juniors, every, uh, every spring, take the SAT and MSQ assessments. And we have three National Merit Scholarship, uh, not recipients, but qualifiers here, actually two of them.
Commended scholars, we call them.
Committed students. Sarah Ridley and Justina Hunt. We also have. The third, the third is not here, he is playing soccer right now on the field, uh, with the Seymour Soccer. By the way, it's only two losses this year, they're ranked third in the state, but anyway, we're really proud of our soccer kids.
We'll ask him to come back.
So of the commended students, just to give you an idea, the College Board, over a million students took this assessment. These young ladies, uh, were about, there were two of 34,000 out of a million plus commended students throughout the nation, and they're being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they're not gonna continue in the 2025 competition for National Merit Scholarship awards, commended students topped the, among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2025 competition by taking the 2023 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. Uh, so it's an accomplishment, they're in the top 50,000 in the country, uh, who had taken this assessment, and that's quite an accomplishment.
And to have three, and we didn't have any last year, but the year before, we had Catherine Bruno, who's the daughter of Mrs. Bruno, that's sitting at the board table. This is quite an honor, and I'm so proud of these girls, and you'll get a picture on our little billboard down in the hallway of the board office for the process of updating. And that is a truly quite an accomplishment.
But there's still more. These, these two wonderful students are the voice of Seymour High School. They do our morning announcements every single day.
Yes, they do.
They do, they come in, and they're quite a team to be recognized, so congratulations. You guys don't know what Kodak, I'm still here.
That's it, something to really be proud of, for Seymour Public Schools, Seymour High School, and the Board of Education. And we've got three of them.
All right, our next item is the student reports. But first, we have to welcome Mrs. Edna.
I have a kind of motion to approve the recommendation of the Seymour High School Administration and Student Council to appoint Jeremy Tomaszewski as the Board of Ed Junior Student Representative.
All right. So starting off with City Council, elections for health offices have been announced. The seniors painted a broad outside of the high school white, and then voting up the time for the AP art kits to paint on it. Homecoming, which is the 9th of November, will be held at the FMS Grand Camp, and the spirit of preparations are underway, and the certain dates will be discussed on Wednesday, which is our next meeting. And then the idea of movie night on the Ask and Cast football field, starting at 6:00 PM. Brayden, who's the president, is working on securing large screen, and Miss Kees is working on submitting the path to the youth form to get approval for it. Hope closes is starting out, but more will be discussed tomorrow for our plans of the year. As in sports, the fall season's underway. Football continues to improve with the record of 1-3 currently. Boys and girls soccer are very competitive with the boys at 9:00 and the girls at 7:31. The volleyball and swim are currently undefeated at 13:00 and 7:00 respectively. Boys and girls across country have been working on lowering their times, anticipating for MBLs. And then for yearbook club, the yearbook staff are currently working on theme that would encapsulate the class of 2025.
All right, and then for art club, art club is learning techniques in multimedia and collaging. Uh, Spanish club, office elections, uh, the first one of the year, and a celebratory Day of Death October 29th by decorating church poles, and then a meeting for a state trip for the summer of 2025, which is really interesting. Uh, performing arts, auditions were held on 9/17, and their first practices have occurred. Um, they're playing at Stop, they're playing at Stop and Shop October 26, June 10, 31, 32. And they're starting their new recording studio in October, a full show starting in March. And then the Electra, uh, um, Electra Park Club, that race is happening in Lion Rock Park on Friday, October 18th. Uh, club meetings happen every Tuesday afternoon. And then for FBI, there have been multi meetings that have already happened, and they've been fundraising money outside of Stop and Shop.
I have a new question for us. I think last year, we made you talk about yourself for a little bit, so we'll put you on the spot. Oh, you have a swimmer on the swim team. Maybe next month you can tell us a little bit about yourself. All right. We have a question. All right, thanks, guys. All right, and three public comments. Anyone from the public that can make a comment?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mike Currie, 72-year-old, I'm here wearing two hats today, a legion, plus, uh, I'm one of the board directors of Seymour Soccer Society also. Uh, I had a wonderful conversation a few months ago with Dr. Compton. I've been on a circulation for a while because I traction my head. I'm back on my feet now, overly, I'm tripping down with the form. Uh, but a couple of items I thought of, Dr. Compton's plan was, we were book buddies at chapter of the press at school before COVID hit. The guys are close and glad, fingerprinted and everything, and we never got a chance to get back into school. I don't know if they have a book buddy program back there again? We're doing it with the first graders, the time was Tuesday mornings, an hour, split session, and some of us would like to go back in there and continue doing the book buddy program if they have.
And then will we be without arms, because it's like we started Mrs. Brayden, then have continued it, so.
Uh, those two, uh, items I was, I was Dr. Compton about was number one. Uh, again, it's sad about those who knew Tommy Edmey. Uh, Tommy Edmey was a member of the Navy Hurricanes. Uh, he's of all fame, world-class drummer. He, he quit to get the programs for the best appreciation class are held at the school in April every year. Tommy passed away this, I don't know, a month ago. And, uh, but, uh, one of the things he did is he got drunk horse for the triceiter, triceiter to come down on a roll nickel, put constantly there to benefit the veterans, and proceeds for the concerts that go toward the VAW and American Legion. Well, by the time they paid their bills, I told Dr. Compton, uh, this past concert between the school, using the school and the police, uh, they charged the Hurricanes schools $4,500. So by the time they paid their other bills, the 20 program, what we ended up doing this year is we gave the money back to Tommy Edmey's scholarship, you know, for, for future, uh, future Hurricanes. The other thing to us, I'm saying though, with the, uh, Soccer Society, I was a docent in the military, third graders came down, Jack and the Buggy, and then sixth graders came from the middle school. And the Archiculture Commission at Thomas Seymour paid for the bus to come down, bring the kids out to the, $1,200. I think that's kind of, I mean, in my opinion, I guess, in my opinion, I said, that's a school function. I don't know why the Archiculture Commission has to pay for the bus to bring the kids out when it's during school hours, and we're doing it for the benefit of the kids. You know, so that's second, that's my, my thought on that. Uh, Seymour High School, uh, I talked to the, I talked to Jim, I talked to, uh, Heather Brown, who has been a program for the veterans as well. Uh, I spoke with Paul Lenny, the last meeting I saw him, about the World Tour Pro Contest at the Seymour High School. We've never had a representative of Seymour High School take part in the American Legion World Tour Pro Contest. We have to speak under the Constitution. And I know those kids in school, they're aspiring lawyers, work government, what kind of jobs, have them on the Constitution. So you speak under the Constitution, this program, and you can win a scholarship for $25,000 nationally. You go from local level, state level, and the national. And a few years back, somebody might remember Chris Faglarella from Seymour, he went up in school, he ended up winning over $25,000 scholarship, he became a third national, uh, that particular year, and he became an lawyer, he reached a clerk for one of the street court justices, and a lot of things is very practical, I understand. Well, residency more about Seymour High School, graduate. We just started today, today I was in a Buggy school, interviewed by fourth graders for veterans' aid programs, uh, was in the Spineless Lines. One of the items I asked Dr. Compton about was, we sponsor five girls and one boy for the American Legion Boys and Girls Aid Program, this special. In fact, I just seen a, there's one of the attendees from the Girls Aid. Last year, Jacob Calvert was, I guess, AP Scholar Distinction, attended Boys Aid with the, with the reason. We wanted to, I asked Dr. Compton to have a meet and greet in the Board of Ed Office and invite the town people that help support this program, along with some of our members and students to come right down the hall, just show you where the door's open, and meet the, meet the students in the special. So all I could do was coordinate with Dr. Compton about the date and time. And then just as a matter of interest, uh, the Seymour Soccer Society, their history buff, they're gonna have a drawing on October 20th. Shane's, uh, reckless, excuse me, reckless, the horse, it's in the, kept green order, so the history buff, if you'd like to learn about history, it's a presentation. And again, I'd like to see if somebody would come down and, and support some of the programs out of the Soccer Society. And so we'd like to have the kids come down there, yeah, hope that program keeps up, and we can do more to educate the kids, especially international, uh, the, you know, the military with the veterans. And work with Heather Brown, trying to work with Heather Brown on this, uh, veterans program with flags, banners, and field flags, and bodies, and so, again, thinking about some issues, and hopefully you can work with us. Think about some issues and hopefully you can work with us. This is gonna be a busy buff coming up with the veterans day services. Eleven, 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 we're gonna be at the park, uh, November eleventh, eleven o'clock at the French Park to do our program, so. I mean, I hope to see a lot of you later. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and we'll try to work on the Veterans Day on the Saturday here in regards about restoring the services if we can wipe that, Board of Ed, and take care of that. I'll work with our slide four and two about expenses and see what we can do. Uh, in regards about with the Soccer Society, we've also, it's way, you know, contracting now. We've also used a senior, uh, the seniors community bus, uh, First Life Woman has volunteered that also for one of our high school classes. So maybe we can take the kids that way and not have to contract out of all store, but First Life Woman and I'll work with you and see what we can do.
All right, anyone else from the public?
Hello. Um, I heard your idea about the big screen movie. Great idea, the town has a big outdoor screen TV and a projector that we're gladly glad that you guys have. Wants to sign on the eighteenth because that's when we're doing our movie night. But any other time, if you guys are more than willing to have it or to borrow it, we'll, you know, provide somebody to set it up for you, so if you guys want to borrow it like that, so. We are looking at, we, all we need is a, uh, driver for the bus and then the school can use the bus when needed, as long as you don't have to take residents back and forth to the community center, um, for the Historical Society or for, uh, or something else, you know, and you can use the bus with Dr. Conlon, but yes, we have to.
The water treatment, yeah.
Yeah, the water.
Yeah.
And we are working with Heather, uh, Brown, who's the president of the teacher of high school. Uh, on the Veterans Day banner to get the veterans, uh, with their names on there, and maybe some pictures to honor those during Veterans Day as well.
And we're also taking care of that expense to be able to hang the banners and the poles and all of that. And we purchased that from the school district and then shall travel with the town public corps to form to hang those on the telephone poles and the thing for lighting them up. So we got that all ordered from the company and itself.
That's all right, yep.
Thank you, all right. Anyone else from the public who can make a comment? Come on, let's, third call for public comments. All right, public comments, bros. Uh, item four is the incentive agenda and we have an incoming lecturer. May I wish to approve the incentive agenda of the. Stephon, Senator Harlan, Senator Messon. And not all of them there. Oh, extension, pass at nine, there's a door. All right, item six, we have reports. A call in the quarter, let's see, one, uh, financial report is. And the finance committee, there wasn't anything to report about, it's under the way. And the building committee. All of them, uh, it is on that.
It was just that there's what happened, the two, uh, sessions, I believe. I haven't remembered, one is the eighth, one is the fourteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, thank you. And I, I saw Mr. Stan today at the beginning of the meeting. He informed me that he was very impressed with what the architects, uh, have voted for that. And then Mr. Prueck also did ensure how to come back to us on the Board of Ed, so if he wants to add anything more, he can coach you that committee.
I did partially that meeting today, go over the presentation tomorrow, and was gonna do a good job with it and, uh, you know, was the start getting the community together and understanding what the priorities are about, you know, obviously it's slowed down, so. The details of the architects are working on some conceptual plans from there, we'll pass some budget, you know, some budgetary numbers. And then we'll, uh, choose for, uh, in the March chapter, these plans. So it should be a good forum to be yourself for people to attend and to start to understand, you know, the project. And what decisions will be made, whether it's, maybe build, build new, or, um, maybe.
Uh, the architect firm, I was on that, uh, virtual meeting today at, uh, two o'clock, I thought it went extremely well. I think it's good to mention again to the community forums, the first one is tomorrow night at six-thirty, and then we begin on the sixteenth. Uh, if you want to invite anybody to attend, they sent out reminders to the parents and, um, also Shannon did a beautiful flyer. We're promoting that, which you all sent us forward. Uh, they have prepared a wonderful PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Stan has sent that to the two ordinary that are on the committee and, uh, the person who sent it on to you all as well. I think you'll be impressed, it really sums up a lot of things and they've really covered a lot of areas. And I just think you'll be, I was very impressed. Now, the education specifications, that's what this is about, helping you out and get input. But, um, like I said, I've dealt with a lot of architect firms in my past and I was very impressed. I'll share that, I'll be able to.
And they think they were gonna make some revisions out of it.
Yes, fine.
Do you watch copy out of it?
They were tweaked a little bit, but you'll get to see it, if you don't attend tomorrow, I don't see that.
Would you share the location of the meeting for people?
Yes, it's going to be at Buggy Elementary in the gymnasium and we'd really love it. It's six-thirty and we'd really love to see parents come out. I know one parent who's had kids go through the school, goes in high school now, and the parent made a comment, he said, uh, she said, you know, Buggy really makes a renovation, very sincere, like, as a little place is downtown. Well, that was a good comment, but she's seen the flyer and was impressed. Uh, First Life Woman will be, uh, addressing the committee as well as the town building committee and one for purpose and, uh, overall incentive of what the plan is open for.
All right. Uh, next two items are related with the self, is anyone from facilities, I always see, was, comments here?
In the second.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Can we just that, uh, to the next one? Uh, curriculum, I don't know if it's a student's map, so.
We had a productive committee meeting, um, talked a little bit about the new, uh, teacher and administrator automation plan, talked about some of the Ask and Cast.
Um, and each policy, the last little, uh, question.
Yep, well, you, uh, you can see through the round, we have some motions today, and we'll, uh, we'll put those in, we've discussed lots of stuff, so. It's gonna be a long process to update what is need because the state intuition keeps wanting to add new policies to the policies we already have, messing with the numbers, putting places. And I said, you know, and I'm gonna say it again, I was, I've been disappointed in our service provided to us by King. And when Mr. Hattman and I, you know, we attend the King presentation, I will make sure there's no amount of people there that we would go disappoint because it's not the service that's given to us for free. And I think if we were in our personal lives and, and some of the stuff has come, you might tell that person to go fly a kite. But you have to be professional.
If my professional life, I might tell someone to go fly a kite, they presented me with information with a kite.
That's really cool. So, um, thank you, uh, Ms. Harlan, for backing me up on that, it was just.
Well, I just wanna say thank you for the time, we've been spending a lot of hours, so we're gonna get through it. Thank you for the good work, and also Chris, the last two, please.
All right, and last one, John, please, uh, please, the chair, uh, okay, or, I don't know. And then, Rob, I think.
No, we talked, you know, we talked about, you know, two of the things we, you know, we talked about CO group and we talked about, uh, Mrs. Fed is working on the revision to part of the coaching and student engagement. Yeah, we'll, you know, discuss them and then, um, work that, uh, you know, later on and, you know, obviously, as with anything, pricing don't work, we've got equipment and it's not, I mean, equipment. So, and you have to have equipment at the standard because otherwise, you know, our students have this abandoned. If the equipment is not up to standard and it's not just sports, any other sports. And it's a right, we thought we, we had ended four, but it was, my friend, my boss, Mr. Foin and Mr. Oster seems to be a void spot in the same spot that we had prior to, uh, for, and for, and we're disappointed. Hopefully, hopefully we can rectify it before it becomes low.
We've got, we've got to bring in somebody to look at it, just thought that was causing some sweating, humidity. That's something, and then also with the cost of uniforms, that was something about.
Oil.
Equipment, and that's it, I'm talking about the cost, increase of uniforms is about double the cost. And we get in the line.
Well, they, they not only have doubled the cost, but they've probably decreased in quality by fifty percent. Yes, I, I've been washing uniforms for a long time and, um, they have gone downhill.
That's what she said, so. As a mom, you couldn't rely to it, because she dealt with them, so it's just not good. Quality and that's what's important, you get, you wanna try to get the best product, you get, you're gonna get five years out of them, and they go to night.
Mr. Hattman, I'm sure with the, uh, quality. So it's not just Seymour.
Yeah, the details, no, things aren't so right anymore. All right, anything else on the reports? Okay, item seven, discussion of possible action. First up we have is Board of Ed surplus companies, if that number is still out, one fifty-two, five, nine, eight, thirty-eight. Press up.
One fifty-two, three ninety, it's three fifty-eight, not thirty-eight.
Or, uh, I just forgot what that is. One fifty-two, five, nine, eight, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, six.
Thirty-eight.
All right, you, uh, said a few words, sorry.
I think I spoke at the last meeting, I, um, I think that, you know, one, it's an area that just need to go back to the town, it's just not, I'm not gonna, of course, we have many more, so I'm actually.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that, uh, the Board of Ed return one hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-eight cents to the, uh, council.
Motion, last, uh, second.
I'll second that.
Second, I ask you, hold on, discussion, question.
Yeah, Dr. Conlon thinks that this is appropriate, I'm fine with that, however, we did talk about assessing the buildings, um, last meeting, and I was hoping that we would have a some understanding before we were out, I don't know, um, so we're disappointed that we don't.
I, I, well, um, my disappointment as well, we have requested a capital plan. And, uh, we, we see, um, a similar list we received in the past, uh, on our updates. But we have not seen to date listed priorities, we thought we're not specific, and like you said, that is what I was hoping to see. We put a lot of our soul into creating our budget, we do what we can to get out there and advocate for it. We are consistently cut and we get cut and then say, okay, well, that's what we do surplus, so we don't really need it anymore. Again, we got cut last year, I'm not sure what methods that stands, so I'm in favor of using that balance for things that we were not able to do because of our budget being cut last year. But I can sense that that's not the, the goal of the charity, so, it's, it's.
Did, yes, sir, um, is that good something to make?
Not that I know of, uh, we're being at the committee, I mean, we discussed, you know, this list of facilities that we're just going over some of the names. We talked about towels in the middle school, we talked about roof, um, road, which is gonna be involved and have to be retrograde. That's the list, and we sent that list to everybody, um, so, I'm just.
If I could, um, if you could help, uh, step on what, what Mr. Conlon didn't say definitively is that of the list of capital needs that are district needs, the hundred, fifty thousand dollars surplus would not cover any of them. So, that's as far as, as we got, and so we did absolutely ask him to work with Mr. Pucci to put together a capital plan that has a narrative and, um, in reference to a couple of districts that have excellent capital plans that are published. What we didn't do, we put a date that dates that, so I, I would like to about the rest of it is a corporate promotion, we'll do this one, but we have that in the one that's still by our hands meeting. That, that should be usually presented with a capital plan, by our meeting.
And we also discussed, and hopefully the policy that we can use that money for the turf people.
That's what the decision was by the Board of Ed committee.
That was a recommendation on the Board of Ed committee, maybe, yes.
Exactly, because, you know, it's sixty thousand that the town currently has, that was the reason, you know, it's about the turf because it's gonna cost seven hundred fifty thousand and then to do a track, it's five hundred thousand. And we all received the reports about how long the turf field can possibly last, and it looks like maybe three more years.
Two to three.
Two to three, there's grass, there are enough in the pasture, all go up and look. We talked about the repairs with the track, um, and we said it's going to try to do some repairs on the turf, something that's safe and has means, but that's kind of what we're dealing with and that's, that's my own reason, it's like, it's in two to three years, the town, there has to be money to be able to have a field for that.
One of, one of the things I noticed being up there, maybe actually for wire practice, is that there's motorized scooters and kids on bikes that are on the, on the track, they're, you know, I know we have a sign that, uh, says not to do that, but, you know, there's nobody up there to police that during, anytime. You know, there's been situations, there are games where, where you're asking people to walk in, and that's just a liability issue.
Then you can be troubled with it all.
Yeah, I don't know if, you know, if you go through all this work, maybe you have to think about a little better governance on that field, who should be up there in the track, why not? I don't want to say nobody can use it, you know, seeing the kids go around it, around all the scooters and, and creating that.
Oh, but whoever's up there for the town.
Oh, we got a gang there, that's fine.
Is the sign chatted?
Always be signs, and I guess we can.
Can be more, you, I don't know. Can be more, you, I don't know.
I don't remember where they are, it's kind of.
This is red letter, it's with your wallet.
But I think it's also ready to go in.
Red, yeah, right.
It's ready to go in.
We need to get signs, because we're not allowed, and whoever is always saying the town contains, you know, needs to enforce it. Or whatever group.
Well, I, I will say, the last time we met, that site right there, and, um, I lost, I can't remember the person's name, but one of them, I have our two ladies, that they were both in Boston, I thought, did go and, and asked somebody with water into your point, uh, champagne, to get off the track, or in soccer, that's because, like you said, liability issue. I, my two years there, I was one of the first ones to have to tell the people to get off the track during school time and stuff like that. Obviously, people didn't like, you know, I was chasing off the track during school time, that was prior to our new track. People don't understand that.
It's treated a little bit from the motion.
Yeah, it was a thing, you had a whole.
Do, and, and for me, with, with the surplus money, we're, we're picking it back, we don't have any idea if it's being remarked or something. We don't know what the plans are, and it's understandable, we can't have a plan for everything all the time, lose and take it, so it's understandable if there's not a solid plan yet for releasing the, um, the field, but the bottom, we never give them back, and you have no idea if it's gonna go towards a collaborative initiative to fix the turf, or replenish the turf, or whatever the proper phrases.
All right, anyone else? All right, here are nothing else, all those in favor? Vows, extensions, motion carries seven, two, zero. Okay, item seven B, mandated policies, the world start, are these new?
No, these are, these are mandated, that, that, or.
Okay, so we do a motion, to make sure, update and adopt.
Yes.
Two thirds, but then.
I'm confused, what did you say? We had a motion to say to adopt.
Right, that's why I asked, are these, are these updates, the policies, or are these brand new policies?
She says, you should know, because you have a policy.
They don't appear.
But, but, these are all, and they're technically not K mandated policies, they are policies to comply with state mandates, of which K has given all districts of the state of Connecticut a recommended policy to adopt.
Right. And then, there's some minor changes that were, you know, made, some of the suggested, but mind, nothing, but I would assume that everybody had changed their view.
And I, I believe the way of adopting is fine, because I don't think that these numbers are any numbers that we currently have in our policy. But I cannot check that right away.
That is correct, that's why the she was.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And there's a lot that sound familiar to other stuff, but they're all in.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, Chris, you want to go first, or I'll go second?
I'll make a motion to adopt policy four-one-one-three-point-one-two, change to include minimum duty for one period for teachers and other certified staff.
Second.
So, sorry, do the chairs be clear, with this adoption, it becomes final? We don't have to revisit it, it can all.
It is true.
As it's true.
All right, all those in favor? Vows, venture.
I have a motion to adopt policy four of one-one-eight.
Good night.
Period one-one, including appendix A.
I second that.
President, any other discussion? None, most care. Vows, assets nine, zero, zero, and D.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy five-one-two-five-point-one-one with form one.
I'll second it.
President, say.
Just to let everybody know that, that K had given us options for various forms, and we reviewed form one with the actual software, that's how I understand.
All right, any questions? Question? All those in favor? Vows, extension, assets nine, zero, zero, and D.
I'll make a motion to adopt policy five-one-four-four-point-four.
I'll second it.
Okay, question, or discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vows, nine, zero, zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt policy three-one-seven-one, point one.
Second.
President, question, or discussion? See, all those in favor? Vows, assets nine, zero, zero.
I would like to thank everybody for voting for those, if that makes it less of a work for our policy committee, thanks.
Okay, item seven C, the Board of Ed, parent, I think, here is.
I'd just like to, for your grant, this request, just wanting to be aware of it, that we're using them basically in stuff, and, uh, we have fifty carriage headers, and at this time, of some of these kids that move in and out, and it's to meet IEP services, we're using them for, and this is a better way to go, transition right now, I'm wondering, um, how long that's, I think, in the program, or not in the program, so we've got, uh, they're going to middle school, who has to have another one, and the high school, basically, had vacancy, but we have been able to fill it. That's why we're questioning that for the high school.
Would you say?
I don't think so. No, just want to make your wire up, if you want.
I'm going to, yeah, is, is that the first question?
Yeah.
Um, so just, if, if you are able to, because this is how life, which is a lot of does, it's costs, et cetera, if there, if you are able to fill a position, then you would no longer utilize the process.
Good question, just trying to, I'm avoiding anybody else unless we can find one, it's just, it's boring, and, but we're trying to leave, and I am, and he's, except for, or still moving down to the middle school. And the high schools, so high school, I mean, it's, I just don't know, it's the king, but you can never fill, position there.
Okay, anything else on that?
Just a quick question, about that power, that he does contract, spider, or when negotiations, will you start that? I think it's next year, so when it started, how, this year, if we're going through, something about that?
No, doesn't get off, but two weeks.
We do, um, I think two negotiations ago, we did one year, and then last time, we got one, figured out, and that's it.
Okay, and then, item D, about, you know, the, the graph, um, for, here, that's kind of.
Yeah, I'm sure they can, just wanted to observe, it's kind of like being mentor learning, well, this is a gentle, uh, pressing request, where these people are, it's a part of their brand, and they're learning how to serve as a parent professional.
We'll take it, take it.
No, we don't, she is doing.
I would just comment that, I think that's an excellent program, to try with people, the experience, they know, and they're John fails, and I think it's a way to identify future educators as well, those can go on, um, from county parent educators to become certified.
Moving on, unless, you know, anything to put up. All right, item seven E, this is going with the contract, um, for, and I believe this will, I mean, this will extend through with the end of twenty twenty-seven.
I have a copy of it, I'm recommending the contract, it's also, um, please, in, in regards, um, I think it's a current year, currently, plus two more years, and I think it's a, a good way to go, um, in regards with the stability and where we're at. It's done an excellent job with the accounting, the audits, and all of that, and I think it's, um, it's better now to go ahead and get this approved than waiting back into the spring and summer, and he wants to make sure too, that he has stability, and so, that's important as well, so. Uh, there's nothing really changed in it, there's only two items, salary, the increased percentage, it's still the signs, everybody else to a quarter, and the other situation is just dealing with life insurance, so you get a certain aim to get, what's seventy in your life insurance, so then, not two, I mean, it's not four, so. Yes, absolutely, so, and those were the only changes, and I think that's reasonable.
I make a motion to approve the business manager contract that's been up there.
Second.
Um, second, okay, any discussion?
I just have a quick question, I'm just curious, I think it's kind of the most ironic thing in the world, that you need seventy, you like insurance, you now.
Yeah, they do.
You want to do money, how much does it cost the district to maintain the level that it's at right now?
It's not important, you know, it's not that much more, I think, is, but you could, you could give the.
I'm sorry, the question was?
About the cost of, like, when you, with these life insurance.
Oh, it's peanuts.
Four times, it's not much, right?
It, it's peanuts, though, because when you cover an entire district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The rates you get, these are all guarantee issue policies, so there are no physicals involved, there's, there's just numbers that are set.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would say, the difference in the cost is less than a hundred dollars, probably, only because what'll happen is when the coverage gets cut in half, you wind up losing half the premium, what we're trying to do here is to restore some portion of it, um, but you can't restore the entire portion of it because of the, of the guarantee issue limit that's on the policy, so it's, it's, um, it, it would, it would be helpful, is what I'm saying.
Right, it's not all the first, you know, it's important, it's important, especially, you know, just.
It's important to my spouse. It's not important to me.
I don't have a spouse to be important to my son, I mean, it's definitely important to his wife, you get a certain aim, just as a man, just, that's in hand, yeah. Contracts, I'll have all the perks, folks, and I'm not from any study, whoever is a manager's contract, that's a district, so you're super dependent. They have all kinds of, or, 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 or.
All right, any other questions?
There are some questions, there's two things in there, one, um, usually I thought we did this, and it's a conversation, and you think it's, or. The second part is, in section B here, it's, you know, talks about percentages, but it doesn't really, kind of, it just says, in the mouth, three times at the party, but knowing that something, less than two-point-two-five percent, so, and every year, we come back to the side of percentage, and, you know, you know, it is, but is that what our plan would be for that, or is he gonna?
That's why it would be the recommend two-point-two-five, if everybody else is getting two-point-two-five, that would be the recommendation, and that's why it's, same.
It's just saying that for twenty twenty-seven, there won't be any questions.
Right, but, but again, I think we have each year, then, we have to revisit it to ensure, because it doesn't, that's why I, that's why the wording is a little vague, to me, in the sense that it would be, how do you?
Can you just put a salary structure in for that?
This is, this is exactly the same wording as the contract that I.
Add.
And, um, there's been no movement nor request to, in, in two years that have since transpired to have this percentage increase for any other reason. I think the language in and of itself is somewhat protective in that, if you, in your wisdom, decide to give everybody a three and a half percent raise, I might come back and say, well, gee, as, as, out of equity, you know, I have a floor of two and a quarter, which I'm perfectly happy to live with, but it seems inequitable if everyone else is getting, you know, three and a half or four, so this is pegged right now to what we were able to do with the current collective bargaining agreements and independent contracts within the district, all of which were two and a half, excluding the teacher contract, which is a special animal because of the way it's structured, so, um, you know, again, I'm perfectly happy with the contract that you've awarded me about two years ago, that contain all of these terms, um, and unless you come back to me and say, gee, we want to give you more money, I'm not gonna be coming back to you and asking for more than two and a quarter percent, but it's protective for me in the event that you decide, district-wide, to go and be a little more generous across the board, in which case I might say, well, gee, um, what about me?
Through the period of fault, on the flip side of that, I think we've seen that happen, and that's why I know, when I'm crazy about it, is that we see it happen where, yeah, maybe you do want a little more, but then you're like, no, you know, I mean, like, you don't, we haven't seen it before, I, I, again, just as an example, and we have seen it happen where, you know, yeah, you maybe want a little more, then it becomes a step forward, and so, I, I do like to see it more delineated out there.
But you could say no.
That's your word, it's my class, like, no.
Did you just say no?
And, and, you know, you seem to get a little dicey on the other side of that, so.
I think it's.
If you want to leave, because we wouldn't go over there too, because.
Yeah, I'm just saying, bottom line, you just said two-point-two-five, but it, it, there's no way, if you'd kind of asked for more, I would recommend it. It's definitely unfair to, about you.
But I'm saying that, yeah, to your point, if that other people did get three and a quarter, let's say, and, you know, uh, then it, and, and we didn't do it, and you decided, well, we, we want that, again, I'm just, it's foolish.
And if, and if they wear it, if they don't, with the individual contracts, if they don't like it.
No.
What was, these are quite natural, we don't even have the parties, I mean.
I mean, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I don't think it's the two and a quarter that's keeping you here, not.
Right.
I'm not getting rich on two and a quarter, and that's not what I'm looking to do, I'm just looking for at least a basic cost of living increase, um, that'll enable me to somewhat keep up, um, but on the other hand, um, you know, I'm not in here saying that I, um, as, as, like, Dr. Compton, I'm perfectly happy with the way the contract is currently written, I'm willing to continue on for two more years at the current, uh, terms, um, and, um, I doubt very seriously that my increases are gonna be more than two and a quarter percent.
It could be, because I'm not gonna recommend it, I, I myself have went through three years, and you all graciously gave me a raise, which I did not take last year, I finally take a raise this year, into my fourth year, I took no raise from the time I was, I'm, so, I think that's all important, too, but sometimes, you know, superintendents get bash about the salary, whatever, and my salary happened to be the lowest, so, that, that's not what I, it's not all about the salary, it's about the score, and what I can do, mainly, but in his contract, nothing was changed, it's that same percentage and without the life insurance. That is, it's all the same way, and I think, I think it was good to just put it out there so we could see it, uh, we could have went into executive session, sometimes that's done, as Jay said, um, you could also ask to do executive session in public, because of the life and the process.
I'm, I'm glad discussing this, but.
All right, making way, all those in favor? Vows, attention, as part of the, as part of.
Thank you very much.
Two and a quarter, Sal, thank you. Two and a quarter, Sal, thank you. Appreciate the work.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, the resolution regarding the, um, honoring the class of twenty twenty four inductees to the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame.
So, good. Uh, all in favor? Both? That's in passing, nine, zero, zero, four, channel, make that eight hundred and fifty, seven. Are you ready to vote? Me ready, I can, you know.
I agree, I'm ready. Should I stand up?
Sure.
All right, so is this a motion, or is this?
Yeah, so.
Well, we had a, you know, a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution, that I'm allowed to read. Second.
That's, that's right.
So, this is a resolution of the Seymour Board of Education honoring the class twenty twenty four inductees of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame. Whereas, the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame has been established to recognize outstanding athletes, coaches, and individuals who have graduated from Seymour High School or coached Seymour High School athletes, and whereas, the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame is inducting its class of twenty twenty four members on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, and whereas, the Seymour Board of Education wishes to recognize the athletic accomplishments of the class of twenty twenty four inductees to the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame, and whereas, the Seymour Board of Education wishes to recognize and honor the outstanding accomplishments and character of the inductees of the class of twenty twenty four of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame, and now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Seymour Board of Education, hereby congratulate and extend our very best wishes to the class of twenty four inductees, the class of twenty twenty four inductees of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame. Those inductees are, those inductees are Paul Pollack Junior, class of nineteen fifty eight, football, baseball, basketball, Ross Rocco, class of nineteen sixty one, football, baseball, basketball, Milcopron, class of nineteen sixty four, baseball, Bill Heffernan, class of nineteen seventy four, football, baseball, basketball, Susan Baxter, class of nineteen eighty, track, Ben Michelson, class of nineteen ninety nine, swimming, and Kim Bogan, class of two thousand and nine, softball. Be it further resolved that we, the members of the Seymour Board of Education, join the members of the Seymour High School Sports Hall of Fame Committee in recognizing and saluting the accomplishments of John Hall, Babe Ruth, Lee Cook, and lifetime supporter of S H S Athletics as the recipient of the twenty twenty four Special Recognition Award, dated at Seymour Committee and adopted by the Seymour Board of Education on this day, seventh of October of twenty twenty four. Once a while, and always a lot again.
All right, any discussion?
You say?
We, oh, that's exactly. All right, well, listen, oh, sorry.
I have a question, is there any representation from Seymour Board of Education on this committee?
I think it's on that actual act one.
No, I, I, nobody put me as a representative.
And is there any, is there any representation from preschool? Administration or coaching staff, or, we but in.
That's, I, I, I don't know about that either.
I know the answer to the question is on.
I know, too, 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 yeah, it's, I, I imagine it's still, but he's, he's.
I am confused, you know, because I'm not sure why we adopt things that we absolutely don't say, and, and it's not that I care about that one to the board, but I do care about high school administration having to say, and, um, above all, so, I would, I would like to, I'm a stand-up woman, and I want to become our, the Board of Education to come on.
There's something, if I, um, you're talking about individuals, though, who graduated sixty years ago, and I don't know where the relevance would be, we can lightly, for administration to pass judgment or to offer any kind of comment or information that would lead to their induction or denial.
I also think that probably the majority of people on the committee don't know these people personally either, so whatever, whatever dossier they're looking at, to evaluate whether someone should be involved in a current administration person who have the contacts of putting that person, I, I, I mean, I don't know, you know, like, how, how are we nominating people, how are we, I just feel like in the absence of any school participation, I don't know why the school makes a resolution or something.
Here's what I have observed, and I'm sure that I'm not an expert in any of this, I have attended a few meetings, and I know a lot of this is based upon statistics, like what they accomplished in my at Seymour High School, and these different schools. That's what I did learn, and how it's a long, and how it's a way that they got the certain criteria. That's, that's what I gained inside, I'm just still, I think, I thought.
True, I got a question.
What?
Who maintains the statistics for so far? Where are the, those statistics used to be in the, uh, the, not having, but today's society, I don't know if there's a cloud cabinet that exists, but everywhere, this, this used to be, I would assume today's society was, you know, was someplace at the school. Part of this person is, if you remember too, I think you were on the board, there was, there was a, a few years back when Ms. Magley was on, but there was an issue where we did not, uh, we did not do a resolution because we had a concern with one of the candidates that we did not want to recognize, and we decided rather than signaling out that one person, we decided not to do a resolution for that year, and we got three full ways, you know, we had a great, uh, why didn't do it to the other people, when you were wanting to single out one particular person, but at the time you felt that was embarrassing, to single out the person at that particular time.
And interestingly, if there had been board or administrative representative, it could have been, if there was board or administrative representation, that might have been something that was ruled over.
Wouldn't have been, yeah, wouldn't have been very.
Well, we have the committee chair, right, we've had Mr. Rosemont and.
Just tell us.
So, that, that might be something we're up, and you can tell us.
And, anything else? None, all in favor? Both, sentience, that's a lead, one was zero. All right, I think that's it for that, end of E, you have information, um, there's a hiring and resignation, but how did you want to strike? I don't, you said, did you sing, uh, hey, sing day from, you know, did you talk to, which?
I, I would like not to accept the resignation, as Paul Lucky was the district grant writer, uh, I didn't get an opportunity to talk with him on the Nashville last week, and I'd like to really get him to, uh, consider to keep on doing it, so, if he was here tonight, I'd like to remove that, just information there, I'll, I'll, to talk with him, and though he's very busy, he's done a great job, so. And if he still wants to resign, then I'll bring him back down.
I have a question on one of the resignations, now, I'm just wondering, since we had our head coach resigned from softball, we got an assistant resigned from softball, and the softball season will be here before we realize it, because, well, not really, we have time.
I, I think that she's working on it somehow, exactly.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I'm. So, so sorry, I just have to, well, it's, I'm here, and I, no, the resignation piece, you know, this is where I can still have a hard time, because to Dr. Compton's point, oh, well, we were able to take back those limitations, so to speak, but, again, we're not necessarily voting.
You don't, it's just a motion.
Right, but, but it's out there now, in the sense that he's been lying, so, at one point, how do we know, like, another person, to your way of the softball coach, okay, well, they decide, you know, we didn't necessarily vote on it, so.
She's the only one that's stuck with resignations, you know, the side of.
It's a situation here, like I said, I was gone last week, and I didn't get an opportunity, I, with the softball coach, I've known this for quite a while, I understand why she's, she's resigned, uh, Mr. Lucky, that's just something that, and it's September nineteenth, but I just didn't get, I haven't had an opportunity to say.
I think there was no letter, right, saying that I accept a resignation.
Right, so all these, I follow, it was each other.
So, all we're saying is remove it from the public, from the generalization.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask.
All right, so we have the, do you have something on the?
Well, I was gonna ask, about the, about the school, who's, who's.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we have the school events, the high dosage tutors.
Oh, you're doing that, okay.
Yeah, we have the, okay, tutors that are going to work through Janu area.
Kind of, you know, that?
Yeah.
Just a question about, um, where the, how are you, where that funding was coming from, or any grant money?
Now, who's that?
And there was a, the branch on the state, and we totally utilized it, resulted in small amount left, and the middle school was finishing that.
Oh, thank you, that's great, thank you.
Right, we see some, some thousand dollars.
Um, sorry, I, again, my, uh, I didn't, so do we have to actually make a motion to strike? That's the, I guess, the problem with that, is we're, we're not taking action on the information, but if we're removing something from the information, do we have to take a motion to do that, that's what I guess, is the, the, where I have on that.
But giving you too much information, they've come all the way on the agenda to this extent, it was just to let you know there are four tutors and they're gonna work, we need.
No, no, he's talking, it's not.
He's talking about the, the grant writer.
Okay, but the grant writer is situated.
They don't know if we need a motion.
Well, it doesn't hurt if it was, I'm a motion to remove from the presented agenda, item eight, C, D.
Thanks, Jay, all in favor?
I.
Both, seven, nine, good. Um, okay, I don't see that this type of say, where, it was a flyer, it was about bowling.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're doing it a little differently this year, we go, or if we want more of an assembly type environment. Last year, we went into a couple of different schools, and we just kind of approached some classes and talked to them, we, so this year, we'd like to kind of make it an assembly so that we could address all of this, so we're thinking of doing that, how we do the middle school, she can address the elementary schools, and then Dr. Compton and me would, we'd address all the schools. So, that's, we're just gonna kind of make that whole day around projects and things that have to do with kindness, and something to send you to, I don't mind the other, like, employer, so.
We're working on, that's gonna be displayed with all of the kids, all the way out to the elementary, middle, and high schools, it's gonna be under thirteen. Um, first light woman, uh, actually came up to the board office, and we had a nice meeting and discussed about things that went well last year, what we could do a little bit differently this year, and have the kids more involved, I actually, I recommended having a student panel of kids from the high school come to the middle school as well, and have discussions about being kind, and just, you know, some of the role-playing interactions, because the middle school kids have got to the high school kids.
So, you have a young man with a sign that's, who came, who spoke to us, would be great.
And, and you want to pledge us to your, or, or, or.
Always really sign, I mean, it's like fully pledged, kindness pledged, so, like, I can, just, kind of hold them a little bit, um, that's something. Kind, yeah, kindness banners, we, um, we'll be using the sign more so that people sign, you know, I say, it's something that's just important to keep up all year.
All right, each is the deal, or is that, it's a social?
Social emotional, yes, uh, it's, it's the contract, it's just, I'm gonna give you information again, it's through the, uh, social emotional, uh, part of our curriculum, should say curriculum, that supports our kids, um, we're hoping to possibly get something funded for the middle school that will be free, um, this is a really good program, we've wanted to do it for years, and, um, so we're starting, gonna be off with it, hoping that checkbook will follow as well, and I hope the elementary's doing the same thing, so next month, we'll see where we can send it in for, uh, check for it.
Okay, and then we have, I'm gonna bring something up about, uh, that's our.
Yeah, you should, you should, you should.
Uh, yes, Lisa Wilson is willing to come back and just be a sub, um, one of her secretaries is out of surgery, and, uh, so she was willing to come back one day a week, just for like three to four times, just want to make you aware of that, and just don't want you to be surprised, I'm giving you too much information, but I want you to know what's going on in the schools, so. Um, the school resource officer, M O U, this is what we did last year, and I've just mentioned to the chief, it's something, um, that we always, I put up that yearly, last year, we had some mandates and lineups that had to change, it's quite involved, so this is a memorandum of understanding, and we're not making any changes, but just one way, um, appreciate it, school resource officers.
I will, please, with that, um, the, yes, thing, because, you know, my mantra on that is that, you know, I, um, because previously, we were not allowed to be involved in, in selection in the school, for, for, and to me, that's against what that program started years ago at the federal level, moved on, it's supposed to be a joint selection process between the Board of Education and the police chief, not the police chief, or the police commissioner making the decision on what police officer should be in the school, because we know, as superintendent, we know what person fit better with our kids, not what, and then tell us who they're gonna send us to the school.
It was a win-win with our chief, because two years ago, uh, Mr. Lucky was able to be the representative, you're right, and I had to be out of town on selection, and he's willing to go out and sit in, so we had representation, we made sure of it, and it's very cooperative, chief was very accommodating in, in how that, you know, lived the process.
That's good, good to hear.
All right, and then, and then Jay is with, um, the, and that's just the relationship that we have with University of Bridgeport, and us, uh, and Jay is principal of vacancy, I don't see anything with that.
No, I, I have posted that yet, I'll be working on it, and the process, so does that work the process for them.
Okay, sorry, I didn't plan on having to, I don't have, uh, uh, Peter. What else say, Mr. Pete?
Hi.
All right.
Ed, I'm good.
All right, Dr. Compton.
Hi, I'm just wondering about, I want to go to the community workshop tomorrow, and see some.
All right, any questions for that? All right, is that time? Most of our team, second.